Thank you for joining us this evening at Park City City Council Meeting, May 9th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Gary Aldrich.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Joel Pumphrey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
A Coram is present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Larry Tweet is going to lead us in the invocation and Councilman Melvin Kerr is going to lead us in the pledge. If there are bid, please stand.
Our gracious Father in heaven, we come to you once more on this day with a grateful heart for the provisions that you've made for self-government, for the provision that you've made for our salvation, for hope that we have as citizens of the United States of America. Lord, that your hand of mercy is still watching over us. Father, I pray for this council meeting tonight, Lord, and the men who have been elected to those offices. Father, bless them. Bless our police force, the men and women of our military, Lord, who are defending the nation tonight. May your hand of mercy watch over them. Thank you, Father, in Jesus' lovely name. We received that bounty at your hand. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you Pastor Tweet. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. And Joel?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight and zero. We don't have anybody signed up for public forum this evening, so we'll go ahead and jump into our staff reports. And we'll start with our city administrator, Jack Woodson. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a few things here, nothing real big. Been working on these solutions. They're the ones that are going to be providing a program to do work orders for public works and stuff. And so we're trying to get things together and get them a list of things that we need to have done. Daniella has worked on it quite a bit with staff as well. We were going to close on a lot in Berry Hill, but that's got extended a week. So we'll have another lot marked off. Had a call from a gentleman that wanted to buy 10 or 12 of them. But told him what we had to have and he kind of backed off. So I don't know if that's going to happen or not. Also, Steph's getting ready for shredding day. This is just for City Hall. I've been trying to encourage staff to start thinking about cleaning their office area. For example, my bookshelves, if you've been in my office there, I cleaned off three of the huge dumpsters full. I couldn't believe I had that much stuff that, you know, after you start looking at it, you think, well, I'll save that. And then after a while, you never use it. So you say, why do I keep it? I don't want our staff to allow trash to be hauled from here to the new city hall that are on our dime. So I'm encouraging them to clean up what they can clean up. Been working with MKEC on the plan review for Village Estates and helping them with city standard specifications. And also worked with them about getting the state required permits in order to get the water sewer going. Looks like that we will probably bid that project around June the 7th. So it'll be maybe your first meeting in June. But you'll have that in front of you. That's my report. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Jack?
Also been working on some code enforcement issues, but just almost every day.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. All right. Now we're going to hear from our Director of Public Works, Rick Norman. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works report for this evening, May 9th, 2017. First of all, in our park department, been busy mowing and trimming in the parks and facilities. April 28th, we did plant a tree at Chisholm Trail in observance for Arbor Day. We did get the medians sprayed on hydraulic north of 61st for weed control. In the street department, busy mowing on the medians. And we've also started to mow on our tarials. On May 3rd, after a big rain that we had got, we cleaned our catch basins. We have done grading on 57th, 58th, Fairview and Park Place. And in the water and sewer department, the average work order per day for April was 33. Am I answering questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Rick?
No.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Next, we get to hear from our Building Inspector, Bob Walker. Bob?
Evening, Council Mayor. Bob Walker, the Building Inspector, Park City. I'm it. Want to kind of go over some activities that in the last quarter that we've issued 116 permits. Out of those, 13 single-family were issued for single-family structures and one was issued for duplex, which in 2016 was the total that we had issued for that year. So anticipating a real active summer for new single families, which would be great for Park City. Okay. I was asked by a couple of councilmen to go over a couple of structures. I had a picture of Jack and you. Okay, the one, this structure, the 641 Terry Town went vacant quite a few months back. It was, and the structure right now is in foreclosure, which I've talked to the, one of the individuals that's involved in the process of this. And it's, there's different steps of foreclosure that they go through. I'm not an expert on this. But we're coming, he's getting closer to where he's going to be allowed to be able to come in and do the outside of the structure. So he told me they're going to put a new roof on it, paint it, clean it up. So that would be great. But right now, at the moment, it's still going to be some time. But I hope, and he was, I asked him about the time schedule and he's hoping within the next 60 days. So that'll be a big help in the neighborhood. The back of that structure does need some help for the decking and painting and stuff and cleaning up. So there's a lot there that's going to happen here just, here just in a few months. So who knows who's going to end up with it. But right now, it's in the foreclosure process. The other structure is at 6444 Northeast Parkview. That was candidate for abatement to be tore down. And can you show me the other view, Jack, would you please? This is the side and kind of the back view of the structure. However, in the last few days, I've had two meetings with an investor that was very interested in taking on this project. They came in this morning and purchased a repair permit. So at that structure, we're going to see some changes there. The structure will be pulled back from us having to deal with abatement, which I'm all for. That's very good. So that investor has a big vision because there's a lot of work there. So in the next few, couple of weeks, hopefully there'll be some significant work down there, improvements. So I've had two meetings with them. And we're going to see a re-site, new windows, process, inside completely redone on that structure. Then to kind of update about the Masco project, that's out at 551 East 77th Street North. That project started in January, which right in the middle of the winter. And now it's to this point. It's approximately 85 to 9% being completed. They hope by the end of middle of next month that they can turn it over to Masco's over there. They can start setting up their shelving, for better word, inside. It'll take a while for them to set that up. But that project is really right on schedule, which is very good. That's been a good area out there at that location. So that's where we're at on that. I don't, actually, we've issued the Arby's permit, which is not really, probably no news. But they're just probably here in the next two days when they get started on their footings. So that'll be coming along pretty quick. Is there any questions?
George? Yeah, on the Arby's, do you know any projected date of opening on that?
Well, I was told 120 days. So that's a good question, George. They got, you know, they cut grade, which is wonderful.
Yeah, I saw that.
They didn't have to bring any, but then it started raining on them. So they had to recut grade and start compaction all over again. And so now I believe that they are to the point where they're ready to start putting their footings in.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Bob. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion. Tom?
I have a question. You've got a motion in a second, and I have a question about the consent agenda. I noticed a couple of other things have showed up on it tonight that normally aren't on the consent agenda. Is this going to be the norm now?
Well, this shouldn't happen in this conversation now because it's already approved in that. But you can ask me later. I'll be more happy to talk to you about it. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes eight and zero.
I need to abstain. I was not here the last, because of the minutes. I don't know if that's correct or not. I'll abstain.
So we'll go seven, zero, and one. Danielle?
Thanks, George.
Sure. That brings us to item A, which is new business, presentation of the 2016 financial audit from Russell Shipley Auditor with Sync Gordon and Associate CPA.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman, for inviting me to come here today. I believe you all should have a copy of the audit report and two letters that were handed out earlier. Start with the letters. The first one I want to go over starts with, we have audited the financial statements in the city of Park City. That's basically the required communication from the auditors to governance. And kind of briefly going through this letter, we did not encounter any difficulties encountered during the audit, performing the audit. Did not have any disagreements with management. Working with Daniella and Jack and the staff, very helpful, very organized. They did a great job. No problems there whatsoever. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We had a few adjusting journal entries and one unposted journal entry that went through. The adjusting ones, they approved. They have made and adjusted according to the books, and it's reflected in the audit statement. On the second page of that, we're not aware of any consultations with other independent auditors as far as opinion chopping, since we've gotten the audit trying to opinion chop. I haven't seen anything like that. And then other matters, kind of relates to the required, required supplementary information in the back of the audit, as far as all those schedules that we report on for the actual budget. That it's management responsibility, government's responsibility for those as well. We do put it together. And then it kind of falls into this second letter here, which is our recommendations, things noted during the audit. Through this letter, we kind of talk about what a deficiency is, controlled deficiency, a significant deficiency, and a material weakness, kind of going in that order, elevating of severity. And the only comment we have here is more of just of a deficiency of nature, more recommendation to have management watch their funds, watch the amount spent, and watch what's going on. Basically, you know, summarizing this, they had, the city had one cash violation, which was not done on purpose, but kind of, it was very, it was watched as far as the, in the capital products fund, funds were spent in December. Bond was, geo bond was issued and then sold in January, so funds were reimbursed. So even though you did have a cash violation shown on the report, it's not a significant area of concern due to the bonding of that and the projected funds coming in. It's just a timing issue related to those funds. You also had three budget violations as far as expenses exceeding what your budget was for. The major one as far as dollar amount was in the bond interest fund. I don't have a concern with that fund due to that excess of expenditures is related to the refunding of the bonds. When you refund the bond, you have to show the entire amount of the proceeds, entire amount of expense in the fund, and that just wasn't covered. It's basically an in and an out of revenues and expenses. So as that covered, that allowed you to go over your budget authority in that fund due to the recording of those expenses for paying off the refunded bond. And you had two smaller ones, the special highway fund and the police and court training fund. That just would be noted on this letter. And they also do due to statutory violations, they're also in the audit report that gets submitted to the state. I don't foresee any issues with the state causing any ruckus on that either as well. So, but we do have to note that. Going on to the audit report, the opinions on page one of three, and that's basically what we do as auditors. That's, that is our part of this whole thing. Pages one through three, the rest of it is the city's. We basically get, put three pages in it that we get to talk about. First page talks about management responsibility, which is for the presentation of financial statements in accordance with the Kansas Municipal Audit Accounting Guide. You guys have adopted a GAAP waiver to not present your financials on, in accordance GAAP, on a regulatory basis, which is in essence is cash basis plus incomers from the accounts payable, and therefore not showing fixed assets and debt on your books and some other accruals and receivables. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on these financial statements. Page two, since you do have a GAAP waiver, K-MAG requires us to put in there that you have an adverse opinion for GAAP. Really, that doesn't mean anything as far as I'm concerned and anybody else's concerned. We had to put that in there. Since you do not have a GAAP opinion, we have to say adverse for GAAP. So don't get worried about that. The opinion that matters is that you do have an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis, which is the highest level of opinion that you can get on this basis or any basis. So I'm going to jump to pages four and five just briefly. This is basically your statement of all the funds, list all your funds, beginning balance of cash, your receipt received during the year, expenditures and any cash, your accounts payable, our incomers booked at year end, and then your actual cash available, which on page five is reconciled to what it shows in the bank and the bottom, middle of that page of checking account, cash on hand, and your, excuse me, amount in the municipal investment pool. And that should always balance between your cash, what you show in the funds, and what you cash in the bank. The only other thing I just want to point out that I mentioned earlier is on page nine, note three, again, goes over, excuse me, goes over your, the violations that we have to report related to the statutory violation of the cash and the budget violations that are shown here. And if there's any questions, I can go into more detail on different areas or different aspects of the audit, or the letters as well. So.
Does anybody have any questions at this time?
I just got the report today. So if you guys look at it and have questions later, feel free to contact me and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did anybody want to make a motion to receive and file the audit? Gary?
I'll make a motion to receive and file the audit.
And John? Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. I now call agenda item 8B, which is on case number Z 2017-01. This is for the rezoning amendment requesting a change from the present C2 Service Business District to the R3 Multifamily Residential District. Before we proceed, I'll ask the council members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from discussing and voting on this case because they have conflicts of interest or a particular bias in this matter. Okay. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions in the case?
No.
I now ask the council members if they have received copies of the unapproved minutes of the planning commission for March 20th, 2017, and April 17th, 2017, which summarizes the hearing on the case.
Yes.
Okay. After the zoning administrators' report, I will ask the applicant and the public who may wish to speak to this item. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Right here on this drawing here in outline in red is the area under consideration this evening. The blue area, which is right here, was the area that was notified in relationship to this particular case. By law, we have to notify anyone inside the city up to 200 feet. And if anyone is outside the city, they get notified up to 1,000 feet. That's why you have these larger areas here, because this is outside the city limits. The land here basically is north, is somewhat vacant, farmland, little vacancy here, maybe a house sitting here and a house here. This is just north of the park. There is a large drainage pond here separating the area from the existing homes. This is a zoning map. This tells you what it's currently being zoned. The light green area is rural residential. That's the county designation. The dark brown, just east of this particular platte is already R3 multifamily. So duplexes could be put there. The brown is R2 residential. And then the greenish, the dark greenish is agricultural. The, at the planning commission meeting, before it even happened, we had been contacted by the homeowner association. And how they got contacted was the fact that this pond is under their jurisdiction. So they got noticed. They were not very pleased with the fact that multifamily housing was being planned there. After meeting with developer Jay Russell, they came into an agreement in which I put a copy in each one of your boxes. I hope you went to your box and got that. And so based on that agreement, I think they're about as happy as they can be with that. And based on that, the planning commission looked at the 17 factors and viewed them in connection with this case and believed that this case should go through and be approved. And so it's brought to your attention this evening.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to present any new information?
Good evening. Phil Meyer with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant. Not much new. I'll expand a little bit. This case was originally scheduled for a planning commission hearing in March, when we found out the neighborhood was concerned or may have issues with it. Jay voluntarily deferred the case from the March Planning Commission, and we had it in April. During that time, he met with the homeowners' association and worked out the agreement that you see in front of you. So with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the council members? No. Does anywhere from the public wish to respond to the applicant's information? And I think everybody got a copy of the email from the HOA president. So we don't have any comments from the public. So I'll go ahead and move to the council deliberation. Assuming that the council has received all the information they need on this case, I will outline the choices provided under state statute for council action. One, by a majority vote, move to adopt the findings and factors and recommendation of the planning commission on case number Z 2017-01 and approve the ordinance. Our second option is by a two-thirds majority vote, move to override the planning commission's recommendation, describe in detail the findings and factors supporting the motion, and attach the appropriate conditions, if any, and approve the ordinance. Our third option is by a majority vote, vote to return the recommendation to the planning commission for further consideration at its next regular meeting with a statement specifying the basis for the council's failure to approve or disapprove the recommendation. So now it goes to the council for a motion. Tom?
I'd make a motion. We approve the planning, pardon me, planning commission's recommendation and approve the 17 facts of finding, or findings of fact, and adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Jim?
And I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Danielle, would you call the roll?
John Leonard.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Gary Aldrich.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Joel Pumphrey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight, zero?
That is ordinance 1023-2017.
And any persons agreed by the final decision of the council on this matter have 30 days after the ordinance is published within to appeal to district court. So we'll go ahead and we'll move on to item C on the agenda, which is consider an ordinance, supplementing ordinance numbers 587-202, or 2002, 673-2004, 781-2007, 916-2012, and 976-2015 of the city of Park City, Kansas authorizing the execution of a forced supplemental water supply and wastewater service agreement with the Chisholm Creek Authority and authorizing all other necessary documents and actions with respect thereto. Doug?
Mayor and council, bond council had a conflict this evening and wasn't able to be here. But after speaking with Kevin Cowan, I felt that I was able to advise you about what this action was. It's good news. What all that, that the mayor read really amounts to is that the CCUA is refinancing some older bonds at a more favorable interest rate. And in order for the city, in Bel Air for that matter, but the two parties involved to capture the savings of that refinancing, then it's necessary that we amend the water supply and wastewater agreements that you can see from your, from the heading here have already been amended on three prior occasions, and then adopt the ordinance that the bond council has provided. Bond council did provide me with a spreadsheet, and I'm sorry, I'll give you information on it and can make it available to anybody that wants to look at it. But I'll summarize it. Over the next 18 years, I'm sorry, next 15 years, as a result of this refinancing... Over the next eighteen years, I'm sorry, next fifteen years, as a result of this refinancing, the city of Park City, for both the wastewater system and the water utility, will recognize in savings from the costs allocated to our take or pay every year, and I gather this has been computed based upon what we take or pay. So it could go a little bit up, a little bit down, but generally speaking, it's around eight hundred thousand dollars over a period of fifteen years. It kicks in for forty-nine cents this year. Not much, but from that point, it goes to kind of an average over the next several years of about forty to fifty thousand dollars every year in savings to the utilities. So I would recommend that you take the recommended action and adopt the ordinance and approve the fourth supplemental agreement and authorize the mayor to execute any other necessary documents.
Okay. So this is something we've been working on with the CCUA, so I don't know, Melvin or Tom, if you have anything to add to what was said. Doug covered it very well. Go ahead, Melvin.
I will say that over the past five or six years, we've been looking at the bonds every year and what's callable, and have been going out and refinancing for a lower interest rate, and they're bonds that were placed back in the early two thousands. So it's a good deal for the two cities.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? Jim?
I'll try to get this out here, right. But I would move that we approve the ordinance, supplementing ordinance numbers five eighty seven dash two thousand two, six seventy three dash two thousand four, seven eighty one dash two thousand seven, nine sixteen dash two thousand twelve, and nine seven six dash two thousand fifteen of the city of Park City, Kansas, authorizing the execution of a fourth supplemental water supply and wastewater service agreement with Chisholm Creek Utility Authority and authorizing all of the necessary documents and actions with respect thereto.
John?
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Linder?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Joel Humphrey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that motion passes, or that ordinance passes eight zero?
That is ordinance one oh two four dash two thousand seventeen.
And that brings us to item D, which is consider bids for improvements to Saddle Brook Third Edition Phase Five to include water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had excellent turnout on this. In your packet, there's a spreadsheet. What we did is we told them that we were going to select the lowest bidder from both projects. In other words, the water and the sewer are tied. So it's the lower bidder of those who bid both the water sewer and storm sewer, excuse me. Looking at this, it's extremely close. At one point, we're a little over two hundred dollars difference, a thousand in another case. The low bidder, and the one that we recommend you selecting, is doing construction for seventy-eight thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars.
Does anybody have any questions, or is there a motion? John?
I'd make a motion to approve the recommended action by staff to set him out.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passes seven one. The next item on the agenda is item E, which is consider a listing agreement with JP Wigan to offer the current city hall for sale. Jack, do you want to cover how we go through it? And then Joel, if you or Jim have anything you want to add, let me know.
We had four people that submitted on this. Burcher, Burcher, anything, Burcher Hathaway. Wigan. Oh, see who's the other two.
Martins.
Martins.
And Landmark.
Landmark, excuse me. The committee, which consisted of Joel, Jim, myself, and the mayor, looked at each one of these. We reviewed them. We had a grading sheet, and we all graded them. It was real close, but Wigan gave the most points.
Joel or Jim, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, just briefly, I mean, there was an awful lot of good presentations here, well-thought-out, and for me, anyway, I think it came down to Wigan just probably offering up the most experience, you know, a lot of people that live in the area and have done it for a lifetime. It's a father-son combo. They're kind of the, they're the heavy hitters in commercial real estate. There's a really good team coming on board to market this. I was, I was pretty impressed with it. I think overall, they were all very good candidates. I mean, you could flip a coin and probably pick one of these. They were cautious. They said, you know, the real estate markets, I'm going to add this part, the real estate market's, I won't say soft, but it's not gangbusters like it once was. We have a unique building. They just cautioned us that it might take a little while to find a buyer, to find the right buyer, but that it was a good building, find a buyer. I think there was discussions of building lends itself well to medical use and church use and, you know, several similar uses, but there's some more details we can get into, but I don't want to get ahead of it. So, anyway, that was just my thoughts on it.
Okay. So, and really, the way we did it is we all each worked on our rating sheets individually. We submitted them, and then Jack, they totaled the points, and JP Wigan is one that ended up in the, in the lead for that, and that's who we recommend using and entering into agreement with for trying to see what we can get out of this building. John?
I'll make a motion to proceed with the recommendation of the committee slash JP Wigan.
Okay. Gary?
I'll second that.
Tom?
I'd like to go on record again that I think that this is something we ought to consider saving, but I understand we need to put it on the market, but price is everything, and we'll wait and see what it comes out at, because I don't think we could replace this for what we're going to get an offer on, so, anyway, that's one we would step.
Thanks, Tom. All right, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item F, which is consider a proposed ordinance amending certain provisions of the city's procedures for licensing solicitors, caravans, and peddlers, and inherent and transit merchants. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance that's in front of you for discussion. What prompted it was, that's kind of a, kind of an old-school or maybe outdated description, solicitors, canvassers, peddlers. Kind of brings to mind people selling magazines and, you know, the guy down the street with a pan in his truck sort of thing, but what's really prompted this is recently, we've gotten quite a few inquiries about food trucks, which is a hot thing, particularly when we have the pavilions and we have Hartman Arena at Fourth of July, we, you know, it's a, it's something that Wichita has dealt with a little bit, and because there was some confusion about where they fit, and they do fit within this article two, that solicitors, canvassers, peddlers, itinerant or transient merchant is really what they are. I thought it was a good idea to bring something to you, and typically, when I get involved in these ordinances, I find things that I don't like, things that really don't work real well, and actually, some things that I thought that staff felt was no longer necessary, and so it's really up to you if you want to go down this road. So what you see crossed out here, and hopefully in red on your copy, it's not on mine, but the changes that I've made are not anything that, with one exception, anything we have to do. There are things that I think from an administration standpoint and PD standpoint would make things easier, not just for these food trucks, but for other people that make these kinds of applications to us. So let me, let me go through these quickly and just in order. In five one oh two, the change I made is, in reading this, I discovered that it actually says that people who want these licenses have to come and appear before you, which to me didn't make any sense, because you only meet twice a, twice a month, every two weeks, and that didn't really fit, and no reason that you should be involved in it, I can tell. But again, that's just my suggestion on that first section there, which would leave this all in solely administrative process, where the application's made through the city clerk's office, processed, the license is issued. You really don't know about it. That's what that would do. So you can make that change or not, as you please. Five two oh three, that, the first changes in the first paragraph were, again, just sort of a matter of form, no reason for a sworn application. Somebody could come in and they could just fill something out. They don't need to swear to it, but it does say in there that if you answer this untruthfully, we can fill your license. You don't need to go in front of a notary to have that have effect and be something we can enforce. And then prepared in duplicate, I didn't understand the need for that, so I just cleaned that up. The real change there is subsection I, which required a photograph taken within the last ninety days. And again, this is up to you, but I guess we didn't see any great purpose in that. It slows things down and makes it difficult. It's just a little harder for somebody to come in and get, fill an application out and get a license within a fairly short period of time. Again, that would be up to you. Section three really is something that we do have to change. The change that I've made is that I have done away with the distinction between in-county and out-of-county applicants. The distinction as it exists is that for out-of-county applicants, we had to do a background check. That distinction is unconstitutional. It's a violation of the Constitution and the Commerce Clause, because it puts an undue burden on interstate commerce. That's real clear in the law. Now, we do have a choice to continue to do background checks for these kinds of licenses, but if we do, we do it for everybody. So it's either everybody or none. It's not, we do them for the people that we think we ought to do them for. We aren't allowed to make those distinctions, out-of-county, people over the age of forty, you know, we can't make those sorts of distinctions. So what I've done here is I've done away with background checks. Again, well, with respect to food trucks, which is kind of what brought this up, I think the focus there is, we're going to require that they show us some proof that they're in good standing with the health department, because that's what's important with a food truck. You know, whether somebody passes a background check, I don't know. Again, this, it's up to you, but if we do it, we do it for everybody. This is unfair to Hobart, because Phil's not here tonight, and I haven't talked to Hobart about it, but I think, I think the chief's position was relatively happy not to be doing background checks for these sorts of licenses. And again, this is a matter for discussion tonight. You don't have to do this, adopt this. We can talk about it, and we can bring it back in some other form. Section five two oh five is deleted because of the fact that we're not doing any more background checks. That's simply that. So if we do them, we put that back in and charge some fee for it. And the same, same thing with five two oh seven, that's really an amendment to that that's a function of doing away with background checks. Now, the one thing that I, that it didn't present to you is the fee structure, which is, you know, I'll give that to you real quickly, and I don't know, we, right now, for all of these licenses, we charge for an individual a per diem fee, license fee of ten dollars a day. If they want to go for a month, it's fifty dollars savings. Six months, it's a hundred and fifty dollars, and a year's two hundred and fifty. Then there are non-individual licenses, which allows really more like a location. I guess it'd be more like Hartman getting a non-individual license and then having people under that. That's fifty dollars a day, two hundred and fifty dollars for month, per month, four hundred dollars for six months, and six hundred dollars for a year. Without a background check, a charge for that, and given the fact that we don't do it in duplicate anymore, it's not sworn to, we don't need a photograph, it's an application we can work up, those seem, as far as the per day goes for individual license, seem pretty good to me. I didn't propose any change for you, but it's certainly possible that we could make it more attractive and lower some of those, those longer duration fees and give a better, a bigger break for people that, for example, wanted to get a license in Park City for a year or something like that. Sorry, that's a lot of information. I'd be glad to answer questions or respond after you discuss it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Doug on this? George?
Yeah, I had one. When you talk about food trucks, what are you talking about? Do you mean about people selling out of their food truck?
Selling, selling food out of a truck.
Like a road coach?
Prepared food is what we've really been dealt with, but that would also apply to, this would apply to somebody in a, what's the name of the company? Swan or?
Swans.
That comes around and knocks on doors.
That's what I'm thinking about.
Yeah. But, but the, but the impetus, George, was from food trucks that are coming around and cooking tacos, hamburgers, barbecue, that sort of thing.
Okay, thanks.
And serving it to people.
Okay.
Gary?
Perhaps I'm just not picking it up here, but the distinction of who is required to have a license, does that require, have a requirement that somebody has to have like a business license or something? I mean, I'm talking about kids that come around with, you know, selling stuff for sports teams or things like that, you know? How do we distinguish those?
Yeah. We have a provision in here that farmers don't have to do it, and there's an exception for charitable organizations that you can grant. That doesn't say.
I don't want to get into business of licensing lemonade stands, you know?
That's a tax exempt under the IRS, but, and I don't know that we do that, but most of the, most of the things that you're describing, I think, would fit under that. Right now, it requires the council to approve that, which we don't really do. I could certainly come back in this one or at another meeting with a little bit clearer exemption for those sorts of things, if that's what you want.
Yeah, I think we need something that distinguishes a real business from, you know, somebody raising funds for something or a kid running a lemonade stand.
Well, now, one of the problems is, is we have to treat, we can't treat our residents differently.
I understand.
Yeah, so.
No, I understand, but.
That's where it's a little, in the past, we really have been wanting to be fairly strict with the vans that come in and.
Right.
Cut loose the kids that are selling, and we're not so sure that they're.
Sure.
You know, they're not being held captive in some of those circumstances. So it's kind of difficult, but I'd be glad to come back and do that, either if you want to do something different on this and I bring it back, or I'll do, I'll bring it back next meeting.
Okay. So Gary, you made a good suggestion. Was there anything else in there?
No, everything else looked good to me. I just needed to know how we would distinguish between people that are not selling as a business, if you will.
Okay.
As a formal business.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything to add? Go ahead, Jack.
As far as food trucks, I would say that we want to ensure that they have a up-to-date food license with State of County.
Well.
Because that's the only one we could verify. If they have it from Tulsa, I mean.
It wouldn't necessarily be county-specific. I think it'd be the Kansas agricultural licensing.
Yeah, I don't know who they get licensed through, but I would think. Yeah, I don't know who they get licensed through, but I would think you'd want somebody that is, has inspected their, for cleanliness and stuff.
Right. Doug, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's something that we should do administratively. I don't know that it's necessary. I mean, that, that would be, that would be something that would be part of our application that they have to provide. If you want to, though, I could put it in here. We really don't deal with food trucks as a, they didn't exist, I don't think, when this was probably done twenty years ago or whenever it was. So I haven't, I haven't tried to put food trucks into any category. They're, they're just kind of out there with all the other transient merchants and peddlers and canvassers. So my thought was that that would be something clearly we would do, but we would do it administratively by requiring it in the application that they provide that.
Okay. Tom?
I was just going to say, nice job. I mean, nice, clean, reads well, whole nine yards. One question I got, too, that along with what would be scouting or anything else like that that you're going to look into, is the food trucks may go to like an house. An house was where we set up the, or not a house anymore, but Twister Harley, when they have one of their weekend events or something. If they get a permit for a event at the facility, then the vendors come in and work under that? Is that maybe something you want to address in the due?
Yeah, it's already addressed in here.
Okay.
Tom, and I think.
Because I could see somebody having a truck in there and not being a vendor in Park City, but coming to that event and, and selling food.
If a person meets the definition, there, this, it reads like this in, in a section that I didn't change. "The person so engaged shall not be relieved from complying with the provisions of this article merely by reason of associating temporarily with any local business, dealer, trader, merchant, or auctioneer, or by conducting such transient business in connection with, as part of, or in the name of a local business, dealer, trader, merchant, or auctioneer, unless the local business, dealer, trader, merchant, or auctioneer obtains a license hereunder that lists such person, firm, or, and, or corporation, and the goods, wares, and merchandise that it will be exhibiting and selling." So the answer, reading it to you, you're correct. That's those, when, when I read the fees, those are what I called the, the, non-individual or, yeah, non-individual license fees. So Alf's, right now, it's fifty bucks a day, so Alf could get fifty bucks a day, they could have ten food trucks.
Okay. But I, I just didn't know how that was going to cover, or if they had to come back and get a license individually.
Alf, Twister City would have to come in, get a non-individual license, but we would require them to list all ten food trucks.
Okay.
And certify that they had all ten valid health certificates and that sort of thing.
Okay. George?
Well, he, he mentioned the scouts. You know, I hate to get into that, because that, that's just part of America, the girls and boy scouts, and I've observed the last year or two, they're going into places like Liquors and Walmart, and they're selling from there as a group, and I believe they're doing it for safety. They don't want, they don't want the kids going door-to-door for safety reasons, and if you look at some of the stats, I can understand that, but I, I just, I just hate to see us get involved in trying to regulate something like that.
Okay.
I'll definitely, I'll definitely come back with something that specifies an exemption, and, you know, probably helpful to say things like, boy scouts, girl scouts, and.
Schools.
Youth league.
Schools.
Those schools, and then, and some other language that encompasses some other organizations, too. And then use, and probably at that point, it might be appropriate to make a, a catch-all at the end that lets somebody come to you as a last resort if they don't really fit in, but they think they're, that they ought to be eligible, and then you can make that decision.
Okay. Melvin?
I know we have a couple of organizations here in town that sell food at different events there, and I didn't know where they would fit in. I don't think they'd have a food license, I'm not sure.
Selling.
Well, I know, you know.
Oh, there's been fundraisers in town before for.
Right.
To raise funds for.
Again, that would, hopefully, that's something I can exempt.
Right.
The exemption that you've got right now is that farmers are exempt.
And really, in some of those.
Farmers markets kind of is what they're trying to get to in that one.
Sure. And I guess really, in some of those, in the application for the license, they're not, they're not engaging in some type of trade, because it's a nonprofit, and so it's not.
Here's, here's what it reads right now, I'm sorry, I finally found it. "Nothing in this section, which is the general section that requires a license, shall be construed to require any license for any person or," actually says business, "which operates within the limits of interstate commerce."
Sounds good.
"Or which might constitute an undue burden on interstate commerce." Well, that's, that was our attempt to try to make a constitutional add-in working. "Or for any nonprofit charitable organization as determined by the Internal Revenue Service." So that's too strict. So that's where I'll focus and bring you back something that's much broader, much more friendly to the sort of things that you've been talking about.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything to add? Okay, I don't think we require a motion here, and we can just move on.
I can bring the whole thing back at, at, at the next meeting. That's probably a good idea.
Okay.
I had, I think the fees are pretty much in line there. I'd say just leave them where they are.
Fees.
The fees, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Okay. All right. I don't see any more discussion, so we'll move on to item G, which is the election of the council president. Last year, I think George caught me on this, because I was a little late bringing this back, so I got her on the, on the agenda for May to get the election of the council president, to just put that out if somebody wants to nominate somebody or wants to throw their name in the hat. Right now, it's Jim as the council president. Jim?
I've enjoyed it the last year, but I think I would like to nominate, I don't think I would like to nominate John Lanier for the position going into the next year.
Okay. John, I don't know if you, you interested in that? Okay. Is there anybody else? George?
Yes, I'd like to nominate George Capps.
Okay.
I, I, I reject that. I'm, I'm not, I'm not interested. I am not interested. I appreciate the thought, though. Appreciate the thought, George, but I don't.
Does anybody want to second John's nomination, then? Gary?
I'll second that.
Okay, and we'll still see if any, does anybody else want?
George, if I nominate, would you take it?
All right, well, I'll go, we got a motion and a second for John Lanier as the council president for this next year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero.
I missed out on that. I think the president gets five dollars more a month.
Jack, there was something you were supposed to remind me to bring up tonight. Remember that conversation? We had that conversation. I forgot what it was.
Oh, goodness. I think I have two.
I don't remember.
About the building.
No, I think it was about the building. I don't remember. So let's start with Jim for closing comments.
I don't have any comments tonight.
Joel?
I don't have anything.
George?
I have a couple. Just remember that we're getting very close to the end of, beginning of the political season, so people who want, want to get involved in our democratic process need to get theirself registered for the election. And the other thing is, Sunday is probably the most important day of the, of the year, which is Mother's Day, and don't forget your mother.
Thanks, George. Tom?
I don't have anything.
Melvin?
I had the privilege of going to the World of Outlaws up at eighty-one Speedway, and that was pretty awesome. I mean, I don't think there was a seat to be had out there. They parked, parking lot was full, it was on Broadway, Seventy-seventh Street. I'm not sure that Seay Ray knew how big of an event he had going there, so, so I thought that was pretty awesome there, and that's all I had.
I have nothing tonight.
George?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, our ninth annual Park City fishing derby's coming up next month, and it's from ninth to eleventh on June seventeenth. A lot of folks have been fishing the pond, a lot of fish have been caught. Also want to tell people to remember their mothers on Mother's Day. I think it's very important to remember our moms for what they've done for us in helping us grow up, and also to vote. That's a privilege, right? We have to vote, so everybody get out and register to vote for the upcoming election. Thank you.
Hey, George, what were some of the, the, the big fish that came out of the pond at your last?
We had a twenty-four inch channel cat, and you have to remember, we give a rod and reel for the shortest fish, and we had a quarter-inch bluegill. Now, this is in three-age categories, so we give it for three-age, so we don't exclude anyone, it's all free, it's put on by the city, and we have local sponsors that, so everybody come out and have a good time. I know folks have in the past.
And John, do you have anything? Okay. John?
Unless Jack remembers.
No, he's, is there?
I didn't even remember the rollers, you know.
Jim?
I second that.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes eight zero.